Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Calling this Selectmen's Meeting to Order, it's Monday, July 10th at 7:00 p.m. Unfortunately, we don't have a flag before us.
I was just looking for it.
I know, I did too.
So I think...
What about one? It's okay.
Get a book, open it up.
Right, I was gonna say, what if it has a flag on it?
No, that's fine. I'll go with this one, I think.
Meeting is called to order. First on the agenda is the announcements and some pretty good news here. Town Hall operations move. And I'll ask the town administrator to give us an update for, we're gonna have a soft opening.
We're gonna have a soft opening, and then we'll have a full opening for the public. The soft opening is going to be for this coming Thursday. It's been an awful lot of work that's been involved with this, and we have, you know, kinks that we have to work out. And obviously, the poor staff have not been in the building to be able to really coordinate some of that effort, so we're gonna have some movers actually move heavy things, file cabinets and things like that. And then Thursday, we're gonna work on a reduced staff at the police station and trade offs, so that people will know that we're actually undergoing the move. And Thursday is a better day, it's lighter traffic at the town hall. And then we'll come up, once we get really settled, you know, I'm looking for the first week of August to do a whole open house. We'd like to try to, I spoke with some of the staff, try to do it on a Wednesday evening, when staff would be normally there, and maybe make it a little longer, from like four to eight o'clock, and really make it a great event. And then, obviously, have people who've been very instrumental in this whole process come forward. So, it is a lot of work, a lot of technology that's being transferred, a lot of new things that are going on in the building to get it ready. And the biggest thing, though, will be a surprise, I think, for a lot of the staff, as the thing has been under construction. Many of them said that they wanted to wait and see the building, and, you know, they're gonna really, I think, find it an incredible transformation, so. And after being in the police station for as long as they have been, I mean, everybody deserves a gold star and then some, so we're all looking forward to it. But I think that this board has understood the, what has been at stake for this long. And I think, once people see that transformation and see what a great building it's gonna be to work in, I don't think that this, the board's commitment to that process has been unwavering, and I wanna thank you for that, because it wasn't an easy thing to do. And we'll have other timed opportunities to tell you that, you know, how important your role has been. But I wanna say that, because, to tell you honestly, it's been a daunting process at times, and I couldn't do it without you guys. So I wanna say thank you, and I know the staff will really appreciate that effort that you've also put in to make it happen, so thank you.
Back to you, thank you.
Well, it's, you know, it's all about a team, and we've had some really good, you know, instrumental people, but, yeah, I'm not gonna lie, it's not an easy thing to undertake when you don't, it's not like even it was a planned thing. So, I think what we did was take a very adversarial and adverse reaction to a situation that we didn't expect, and I think we've made an incredible, incredible opportunity for the town to go forward, so thank you.
Storytime at the library. That happens, next one will be the 13th. There'll be one on the 20th and the 27th, that starts at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday mornings. And this, this kind of Wednesday, it's, we love our pets, and it's for children, three to seven, is it? Yeah, three to seven. So look forward to seeing y'all here Wednesday morning.
Thursday.
Thursday morning.
That's okay.
That's okay. Next, we have minutes. For July, June 5th.
We'll have to do two votes, 'cause I have to stay until June 5th.
Okay. I don't think we can do the second one. It was Joe, Roland, and Tommy.
So we'll just put that off in the August meeting?
You can do the 5th, you can't do the 19th.
You can do the 5th, we've got three of them. Is there anything?
I read them, I didn't see anything.
Oh, okay.
I have four corrections. The first one is on, in the minutes of that minute, it says that the selectmen remained in the audience, and we moved to the audience, 'cause in the minutes on the, so after announcements, there's the minutes, that says on the first page. And the last, second to last line says that, but the selectmen remained in the audience, and since it was our meeting before, we were at the table, and then we moved to the audience. We weren't, we didn't remain in the audience, which is a correction, 'cause it was a little confusing for people to read. The next one was...
Andrew, on that, though, it says that we suspended, because the board did not sit at the table with the finance, but rather remained in the audience, so...
We moved from the audience, 'cause we suspended our meeting, moved to the audience, and then the finance committee...
I think that's implied, I think that's implied with suspending, that we did not sit at the table, but rather we remained in the audience during their meeting.
I think that's probably what she was thinking. So how would you, how would you like it to...
Just to have it say, "move to the audience," instead of "remained," because "remained" it sounds kind of like we were already in the audience, when we were. The other correction is on the second page pertaining to the public forum and Mrs. Helena Levki's comments. She continually said that she wanted to have a written confirmation that she, that there would be a phase two, and that she could be included in the making of, the designing of phase two. And it doesn't mention that at all, so I think that, since she repeated it quite a few times, that it should reflect that.
Well, I was gonna say, yes, she did, but we also did not honor that request because of the...
Yeah, I understand that, but I think it should still say that in the minutes, that she did say that. That way, it's clear that, why she came to the meeting.
If it's any help to, to the board, Helena and I have met, we've actually been on the playgrounds, grounds. We're working together about the entire access pathway, which is an announcement unto itself for another board meeting, but I've been able to secure a great deal of donations, and I'd like to do that on a, on a separate occasion. But having said that, we're gonna be able to put in a five-foot wide pathway that will go to all of the area that eventually will be playground, but initially to this area. And we've gone over a couple different things where she is already offering and I am welcoming assistance. And so, I think what might have come across in that meeting, I think, is really, is evolving into, I think, a really good working partnership. And I don't, I don't, I mean, I can put it in there, but I don't know why, you know...
Well, mainly just to have it, the record straight, so that people can look back on the official record, which are the minutes, and understand what went on.
But I think we've had this discussion about how much, I mean, that is a paragraph unto itself that are in the minutes already under public forum.
But it doesn't state why she's there. It just says some vague-ish stuff about it.
To speak about the plans for the playground, I think that's a statement.
But it was specifically about phase two.
And she would like to see the second play, phase of the playground be inclusive of those with disabilities and wants to begin fundraising. The town administrator indicated that there are specific rules relation to fundraising efforts, which can be discussed for a second phase, and then we talk about Kevin Delgizzi to date the phase that hadn't been completed. I, I don't know, I mean, I think we're splitting a little hairs, but I mean...
This is beyond the board. Really, the responsibility lies with Parks and Recreation here.
Well, yes, but it is in our minutes, and it was, it did happen at our meeting, so the record should be clear, so that's, if somebody reads this later on, they'll know what was happening.
Well, I think that it is clear, that she came, we talked, I think even at the end... Okay. You know what, I'll come up with a...
Can you add that she requested written confirmation from the board, which was not given?
Right.
And that she wanted to be a part of phase, made sure that phase two was made in.
Well, yeah.
She would like to see phase two.
Well, we have her involved in phase one, and I think it's a great thing. And, see, one of the things that I, I think that we have to remember is that an awful lot can take place even after a meeting, and so, you know, whether you're gonna, you know, spend an entire, this, this could be an entire three pages of that dialogue. And that's why I explained that it's, it's a capturing of a number of things, and we're not gonna necessarily capture every single thing that somebody wants.
Yes, but you must include and capture the main points of the...
Well, I would say we've, I've been including and capturing a lot of main points, Mr. Allwood, for, for over a year, with a lot of other things, so I don't have a problem doing that. And I will do that, but I think, again, we're talking about something that I think was captured pretty cogently, but I will add that in, that's the request of the board.
And then just write that it was not granted.
Yeah, that it was not granted.
And the last point is for, in the section, "Special Town Meeting." It says that the board of selectmen were made aware of, made aware that town of Blackstone held their new town meeting and voted to approve changes to the original codified school budget. The town cannot call for a special town meeting, and it continues on. The point is that we, the whole point of having a special meeting was because the Blackstone approved more money than was originally certified, and without that point being made, it's not clear why.
It is actually in the first sentence. "The board of selectmen were made aware of the town of Blackstone, held their town meeting, and voted to approve," same words you just used, "changes to the original certified budget, school budget." That's exactly what you just stated.
Yes, but it's an increase in life, so...
Well, I think we, we figured that out, but, you know, this was the preliminary. This was to explain that we had not actually received the certificate, the recertified budget. And the whole point of that discussion at our meeting was to make sure that the school committee knew that they had to go back and actually vote that. So that was a, not only a recommendation, it was something we had sought input from, from town council. So it was something that they took and didn't realize that they had to do, and went back, and they had their meeting on June 8th. So I think what you say and what, what that first sentence says is exactly the same thing. So it's up to your board whether you wanna change that or not.
I think it's right there, "voted to approve the changes in the certified budget," I think it's there, and that we were waiting for the certified number. I think that.
If you want me to say, "voted to approve changes, which were higher to the budget," I can do that, but changes are changes, so I mean...
Actually, that recertified budget came down.
Right, for what they were asking for. So it wasn't, so again, he's right about that. You could look at that and say, "changes for their side was actually down from the amount they originally certified," and "changes for us was, you know, eventually wound up actually increasing from where we had approved," so, so, you know...
The, the point of having the next, for us having another special town meeting was to, because Blackstone increased...
No, it's just because they changed it. It could've been an increase or a decrease. If it's changed at all, then we would've had to deal with it one way or the other. So even if, if theirs was...
If they certified at less percentage than we did, then we would've had to go back and make our percentage less.
Exactly, but since it, it should state the exact reason why we increased, why we had to go to special meeting, not just change it, that they increased it, so we had to go back to...
But it was, no, it wasn't an increase, though. They were still within the, the number that the school gave, and it was actually lower than the school gave, but higher than we gave. So by saying an increase, that would imply that their budget was increased?
Well, it was to what we had passed at the last town meeting.
But that's not what was...
Percentage-wise, not what they originally asked.
But that's not the certified number.
Yeah, but that wasn't what was on the first town meeting. What we had passed was what we passed.
But we, we didn't certify, we didn't pass what they certified.
Yes.
So by saying it's an increase...
Well, it's an increase to our budget that we had repassed.
To the Millville budget, but not to the...
No, actually, it wasn't, it wasn't even an increase to our budget at that point in time, because you had not made a decision about whether you wanna have an actual special town meeting. The whole point was, you could've decided to do nothing and not had a, a special town meeting, and, and that was the next meeting that we took up. So this was really just to say that we couldn't do anything, we weren't in a position to do anything until they recertified their budget, only, only because Blackstone at their town meeting had made changes to the original certified budget.
But if we hadn't done anything like you suggested, we would've still had to pay the money, the extra, the extra...
Not the extra, no.
Yeah, yes, because that was the whole point of why we had it.
We couldn't have paid it, because that town meeting voted to pay X.
You had forty-five.
But with the agreement that we have with Blackstone, with, Blackstone approves more, we have to match the...
But we still have to go to town meeting.
Yeah, but if we hadn't done a town meeting, it would've still gone through.
Then they go to a super town meeting, and force a town meeting.
I don't think so, 'cause that was not what was said at the town, special town meeting by the moderator. He was saying that if we hadn't held a top, special town meeting, we would've anyway had the, had to pay it.
I think maybe...
That, that came from town council, and that's what I, that actually was a memo that we circulated at this meeting, that that was before we could even do that, that was one of the things that we had to consider. Again, I, I would be...
I wouldn't say an increase, because that would look like the budget was increased. I would say that did not meet the percentage per town, or...
Yeah, I mean, it really is just that it's a change, didn't matter.
Something about the percentage change, but it's below the hundred percent that they asked for.
It's just because there was a change. See, that was the point, there was a change from their, right.
I know, I understand that if it's a change plus or minus of what we voted for, we have to re-vote.
Right, so that's why I put the change, right.
Voted, they voted to approve.
And then recertify.
Because Millville, because Blackstone's meeting comes late in the year.
To approve.
There isn't a whole lot of time to work these issues out.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, yes. Yeah.
I would just put, instead of...
This happened two years ago.
I would say, instead of changes to the original certified school budget, voted to approve money, an amount higher than Millville's portion, or something to the effect. Millville's voted, higher than Millville's voted number, something to that effect, 'cause it's not an increase.
Yep.
All right, so with that said, I make a motion to make the changes of the minutes with those three items.
Okay.
Make the motion.
I made the motion, just need a second.
You made a motion, second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Stand.
The next item on the agenda is the Council on Aging, Acceptance of Resignations of Ellen and Robert Bowen, and the appointment renewal of Richard Hurtu.
Non-renewal.
Non-renewal. Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, the resignations of both Ellen and Robert had come, well, they weren't up for reappointment, but Mr. Hurtu was. I had reached out prior to our last meeting when we were making the appointments, and he said he wanted to think about it over the weekend, and we just didn't connect that night before we had our meeting. So he did submit a letter, and I do wanna thank him for his service, and more importantly, thank Mrs. Bowen for all of her service as well. And I did include a letter...
You did, did, I saw one letter, did everybody, oh, they're on the same one?
Yeah. So, and then I...
We'll leave one for Mr. Hurtu, for his time served.
Exactly, thank you.
So I make a motion to accept the resignations with regret of Ellen, Bowen, and Robert. Bowen.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
Aye. Richard Hurtu.
He just won't be coming in to me, but I thank him for his, his time. And do we have something on cable for those opening spots, or how?
Not yet, you know, I've been trying to focus on the, the town hall piece of it, but we can do that. I do know, I've tried to make sure that our clerk is more involved in the appointment process, and I know she does, she's away at a conference this week, but prior to the last weekend, she did send out letters to inform the people who are appointed, and also, I have been making sure that when I speak to people, and I actually have maybe three possible people who might be excited about joining some of our empty spots, but that's a good idea. I'll have her actually put the vacancies posted to it. Or I can too, it's just that I haven't done that yet, so I'd be more than happy to do that. It's a good idea.
Then we have resignation of Potine Patrolman Jeffrey Beckwith. My understanding from reading his email is that he's moving further away from, presently he lives in Mansfield, that's, that's quite a haul, I mean, for a shift, and he's moving further away. So with regret...
Yes. I make a motion to accept the resignation of Patrolman Officer Jeffrey Beckwith, and again...
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
We're gonna have to move the police chief. Peter, do you have anything?
No.
No, okay.
No, I do, yeah, I do have one question. Is there some time, I know you guys have been busy, so I'm...
It's okay, Pete.
I'm gonna ask you what you've been doing. Do you think it's possible at some point in the...
Can you just come up here for a moment? 'Cause they can't pick you up on the microphone.
Okay.
I just wondered if it'd be possible at some point in the next month or so to give an overview of some of the things that, I know you haven't had time, but what, remember what Jerry and his wife gave at the meeting last year?
Yeah.
I'd like to know what, in fact, with all the things that were brought up, have been accomplished or addressed.
A lot of that stuff already was being addressed, but go ahead.
It's being addressed.
It was being addressed before that pile.
Oh, I understand that, no, I understand that, but...
I think you're right, I think there, 'cause there was some conversation at the special town meeting, people wanted to know about the back taxes and what was being done, so I think I've heard that around the community also, and about the buildings and things in town, and there are some things in here tonight that is gonna be on that.
And the junkyard on Hill Street, and the junkyard across, right next to the club, I mean...
So you're interested more in the enforcement aspects and where we are with, you know, town regulations?
Yeah. See, one of the things I was curious about is, right after he had, 'cause I went to the, the hearing at the court, and he was fined, but two days later, he's bringing stuff up there. And he was bringing stuff in day after day after day for months, and the pile grew in six months to half again what it was. The other problem, that every time he has a fire up there, people have given up. We'd call police station, and he's gotta have a scanner, 'cause as soon as that call is made and a response goes out, that fire's out.
You're talking about the Hill Street property.
And I know the stuff that's being burned in there is wire, you, I know the smell of it.
I can tell you, I mean, we probably, what, we, it is an ongoing active case, I can tell you that. I can also tell you that Conservation has, at least on two occasions, actually issued violation notices. Because it's an active case, I would just like to leave it at that point, but I will tell you that we're working in a very team-oriented fashion now. We do have an enforcement task force, which has actually yielded a number of very positive results, and, you know, I appreciate that interest. I know you're not a director, but, but you're, you live close there.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I can't see it, but other people can.
To assuage your concern, one of my notes coming into this meeting was for, for this, I was gonna call for an executive session on, on task force, going enforcement Friday at a next meeting, because it involves potential litigation.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And I've, I've had, I've had a couple of neighbors come to see me this past week on similar issues in other areas of town, and it's about time that we get this all together and come out with a plan.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you for bringing it up.
You're welcome.
Next is preparation of public records guidelines.
I, I put that in there because I just wanted the public and the board to know that there were some major changes related to the public records laws, and in particular, every particular town and city had to designate a records access officer, and there are many finer points about having to actually take and receive requests for public records, and also timeframes in which they have to comply. Our records access officer is our town clerk, and it is noted on our website. She is somebody who is handling all of those requests, and will be making sure that even if a request comes through another department, that it eventually needs to make its way to her, and, so that we have a focal point.
Do we have to make their an official appointment?
You know, it, they didn't say that it had to be an official appointment. We, we discussed it at length about who would be the best person to do it, but if you'd like to do that and make it a notable thing, I, I don't see any problem, and then in the subsequent years, we can put it as a regular appointment. I think it's, it deserves that, actually, especially with transparency and, and things to that nature, so I would welcome that, and I'm sure that Diane would too, because it is another additional responsibility should be taken on.
Put that on our agenda.
Would you like to make a motion?
Should we put that on agenda for a future item?
That's right, okay.
And I'll second that. Now we can get into some interesting things. Norfolk-Aggie and Tri-County enrollments.
We are still awaiting, you'll see, the Norfolk-Aggie student numbers had not changed from the previous year. We still have one, two, three, four, five, that are gonna be attending through this upcoming year. Tri-County, I've been trying to ascertain how many, I was told that we had two students that were returning, and that they had a potential for two more students. So as you can see from the email correspondence that I did receive from them after asking again, it looks like there is a potential, again, for two more additional students. However, I have to wait till the 14th, and I still haven't heard from them. So the real long and short of it is, I don't anticipate, it's up to the students as to whether they're gonna attend now, so they've been accepted. So we're just waiting to see if the students are both gonna go. If they don't, then we, you know, would've been in a better position transportation-wise. If they do, we're gonna have to actually review that. So I've been in touch with our transportation, yeah, Bill, and he knows that this is like an awkward time of the year, that we're both trying to figure out, you know, what it will cost.
And what did I say about Keefe Tech?
Yes, well, we have a, another student who is going as far as Framingham, and, and unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, it's, it's just another thing that we're gonna have to consider, and if you read that email from Bill, there is concerns about not being able to use the same vehicle. So one of the things that I'm, I'm gonna be doing is reaching out, because I now have found out that Blackstone has a Keefe Tech student as well, so we're gonna have to think about, how does that translate? And I don't know what their plans are on their side, but obviously, I'll be doing it.
You might wanna check within the valley, because if we're going from Millville up to Framingham, there might be some other students that you might be able to pick up in other towns.
So that would be the, you know, I wanted to find out if it was possible, if we were gonna have to get an alternate or an added vehicle because of the two additional to Tri-County, because once we get beyond eight, you know, we would, we would have to do that. So, but from what it sounds like, is that they'll not be able to make that time commitment to get the students to the area for their start time. So it's good, it won't be just Blackstone, you're right, I'll be looking at some other communities.
That could be an expensive proposition.
It's an added, yes, additional... It's an added, yes, additional.
It's a nice, it's nice that the kids can have with the open enrollment, they can go to what better fits them. The nice, the part that's not nice is that the schools that are offering, I mean, all schools offer. Valley Tech chooses not to take out a district because they turn away two thirds of the in district kids, which is great. It's unfortunate that the schools that are taking kids are trying to balance their budget with us and other towns. And that's exactly what's happening, and it's too bad that the state can't say, no, you cannot do that. It's an unfortunate, it's abuse of the, of the towns that are sending kids.
Not funding me and they.
Yeah, exactly, so thanks to the State House, we're in another predicament. Just wanted to.
That'd be interesting to see what, because we know, we know Norfolk Aggie and Tri County tuition. And Tri County is, I mean, it's what, like three times the rate almost?
It's unbelievable.
I'd be interested to see what Keefe Tech is.
It'd be cheaper for us to send our kids to Marion and Framingham or to Mount St. Charles than to send them to Tri County.
That's true.
That's sad.
I know. Absolutely tough, preach to the choir here on that one, I know. But I will, I will, I will, by our next meeting, we'll have a more definitive, and I'll look at the issue in terms of the tuition for the next meeting if you'd like. And I will also hopefully have firmer numbers for what we're gonna need to do for the transportation. And I will check across some of the other towns. It'll hopefully be a little bit easier to do than it'd be in a jail cell to do it, so I think I'll get it done.
Your county general's office responding to our articles on special town meeting, I'm sorry, may town meeting.
Yes.
They're holding back on Article 12 for further review, and that has to do with zoning?
Yeah, and it's not unusual when there is something like that, that they'll take a little bit longer time because they're inundated with the amount of articles across the state to have to review. So I don't anticipate that it's gonna cause any problem, but just so that you know initially, they hadn't found anything wrong with the approval of the articles that were there.
Next on the agenda is Fire Friday Support Foundation, Karen's lucky enough to.
So you wanna hold that off until the chief comes?
On this?
I'm, it was his grant, right?
Yeah, I know that it's not, yeah, Trish had worked on it along with the fact that they were looking for communities that did not have, you know, a certain amount of AEDs. But sure, we can wait, and he can talk about that a little bit. He did already share with me that the main benefit for this is that we will have a brand new AED that will be at the new town hall.
Not going into a cruiser.
Well, I know one's coming to the town hall, so that's a good thing.
Okay. Trash, trash responsibility.
Kids Club.
Kids Club.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've had Ms. Maloney, Pamela Maloney, who's on our Conservation Commission, who had approached me about one of the things that both of her children are very active in. And I know that this board has actually advertised on behalf of the Heritage Corridor for their regular trash responsibly items. And now they have a kids' club, and she is joined today by both Ivy and Clover Maloney. And they're here to talk about the Kids Club Trash Responsibly Initiative.
Yes, so we are partnering with the Blackstone Heritage Corridor to come up with a kids' club to help teach the kids about what it means to trash responsibly and what litter can do to our environment. So we're gonna start later this month. I think our first meeting is the twenty fifth, and we'll meet monthly. And some of the things that we're gonna do, we're gonna be going back and forth between Blackstone and Millville and finding public areas that are, collect a lot of litter and cleaning it up with a group of kids. And we're also working with the Highway Department to install the decals on the storm drain. Here. You can.
Nice.
So we'll be putting these on all the storm drains in the areas as we kinda go around and do them. So our first area in Millville we're gonna be doing is Berthalet Way and the Millville Elementary School. And then we'll be doing Main Street here by the library and over onto Central Street. And we'll be working on the Greenway, the Millville end of the Greenway as well, and that'll be our first three areas in Millville for the year. Any kids of any age are welcome to join.
Really appreciate the initiative, but please be safe.
We will.
Please be safe.
We are, we're working with the Highway Department who's gonna help us like bring cones and everything too to help keep us safe, so. We've got lots of gloves and trash pickers and.
I was gonna say, our Conservation Committee, Conservation, they do it every year? They try to get all the streets covered and.
We worked with them this year and we did an awful lot to, to help, and I believe we had a very successful trash pickup this year, so.
Cause they kinda got it down to a science with the pickup, the gloves, the whole thing, so I am sure you've.
Yes.
And how has your response been? Cause I've seen it on social media.
We, we've got about, I think about fifteen kids signed up already.
That's great.
We'll see how it goes. People can kinda come and go, so we'll hope to get enough people to make a difference anyway. But this is sort of off the heels of, the kids really enjoyed doing the pickup with the town this year and, and for Earth Day, and said, why do we only do it once a year?
And when you get to the high school and you're National Honor Society, my grandson's got firing points all the time picking up our street.
You wanna tell them why you wanna do it? No? You were all excited on the way here.
Different when you're in front of everyone, huh?
Yes.
And Clover's action.
Yeah, she's hiding.
Well, I want them to know that maybe they had a little bit of influence on our highway surveyor who's actually attending stormwater classes, a two day session. And because, I think it's because you guys had talked about it to him, you know, so you're even influencing our highway surveyor.
He seemed very excited for us.
Who's also our stormwater manager.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you Clover, thank you Ivy.
If there's anything you need from us, just reach out to us and let us know.
Thank you, that's good, see, we knew you could say that. See you later.
Now we're looking to approve the Animal Control Officer warrant.
Yes, yeah, it's an annual thing that you do, and it would be at the beginning of the fiscal years usually when we actually do it. So again, it's to actually appoint it for the next year, and we notify this by posting it as a warrant. And then the state gets notified as well, so they know who to connect with. And it follows with the appointment schedule that you had already done. With Kevin Sullivan being the Animal Control Officer for the town of Millville, and the assistant being Gary.
So I want to take a motion to, to sign the warrant.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Row.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have?
The.
I'm assuming you're here with Blue Wave?
Yeah.
I don't see it.
Yeah, I put it in the message that.
Oh, they were, yeah.
Yeah, that it came in afterwards.
It was on the email.
Yes, yes, so if we could do it at least in selectmen's form, there's no vote that I'm asking you to take. It's just that Ms. Glynn couldn't make the last one, and it is still time sensitive through the month of August, so.
Okay.
That's what, why it's there, so it's in the packet.
Yes, thank you for your patience.
Are we gonna take selectmen form now then?
I think if Joe was called for that to change.
Selectmen form before old business, so she doesn't have to sit here.
Thank you for having me, and I have extra copies if anyone needs one of the presentation. I thought I'd run through this. Would you like to see one?
Sure. Thank you.
Solar power opportunity.
There's also a clipper right here, I'm gonna have it up here for you.
Oh, great, good. Oh, thank you. Get out of your way. So I am with Blue Wave Solar, and we are a solar company based in Boston, Massachusetts. And we actually don't do the typical rooftop solar that you see. We do, we have a financing product that a lot of, that a lot of installers use. And then another bit of business around solar that we do is community solar. And so we build large scale projects and then find off takers for the solar that are within the same, you know, utility region and system operator load zone that can interact with that system and, and buy the power. So we are a certified B corporation, which means that we have a public benefit. And our mission is to make solar available to everyone everywhere. So we are developing a set of three projects in Westport, which are be, expected to be start construction at the end of August and early September around that timeframe. And we are able to offer the net metering credits that are available from that solar project to public entities only within the national grid territory of southeastern Massachusetts. And, and Millville actually falls within that territory, the, the electrical grid system map that, that the system operator uses. So we can offer to offset the town of Millville's electrical consumption at about one hundred thousand kilowatt hours of electrical consumption annually, which will save the town approximately thirty-three hundred dollars a year.
I'm curious about how you arrived in that number in terms of the credits.
Sure, so we're going to match that up with the electrical bills from the town of Millville. But we are able to sell approximately thirty-three, thirty-three thousand kilowatt hours annually to each customer from each of our three systems. Added together, that makes about one hundred thousand kilowatt hours. If you think you need less than that, or when, when we take a look at the full set of, of electrical bills and we can understand what the load is annually and what the historical load has been, we can make a suggestion for lowering that or potentially even increasing it, you know, to accommodate. What we typically recommend is that we take a look at your full electric load, and then we sell you approximately eighty-five percent of that in net metering credits. Because if you decide to do an electrical retrofit, say, to your buildings, like for, you know, this library, you change it all out to LED lighting, then you might save some energy. And we don't want you to be buying more energy from us than you might use.
The. Millville actually, we, we use on average around five hundred thousand kilowatts for municipal buildings in town, in total.
Kilowatt hours?
Kilowatt hours. Fortunately, we've done a lot of work with exterior lighting and that kinda thing, and we've met, we've met the. Department of Energy Resources requirement of getting down in two years, seven, we reduced that usage by seventeen percent.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Library exterior was done, but the thing is, is that the electrical rates are so volatile.
So what we offer is a twenty percent discount off of net metering rates. So whatever the net metering value is, we would, we would sell you the credits at twenty percent discount. So if the rate goes down, it's twenty percent off of that. If the rate goes up, it's twenty percent off of that. We do have a floor price of eight cents per kilowatt hour, so right now the price of electricity is approximately sixteen and a half cents. I think someone mentioned to me today sixteen point nine, so that's about half.
Yeah, I have those numbers somewhere in my briefcase.
It's about half of, you know, so that's a floor price. So if the, if the, if the price of electricity went down to about eleven cents per kilowatt hour, and, and I also wanna specify that this is supply, transmission, and distribution costs. It's not just this energy supply. But when the whole cost goes down to about eleven cents a kilowatt hour, that's when you would be, start to bump up against that eight cent floor with your twenty percent discount. But working in the energy industry, there's, I, like anybody that expects that to happen. That for prices to decrease, you know, over time generally, but certainly not by, by that much. And, and another point that I, that I'm making here is that the, the chapter thirty B exemption allows municipalities to enter into energy contracts without a competitive procurement plot process, specifically so that you can take advantage of opportunities that come along from time to time, and it's difficult to compare one to the other because of development schedules. So when we develop a, a large solar project, it's very much like real estate development, and it's very difficult to compare one to another when they're on different timelines and, and different situations. Oops. Wow. Is it? Oh, I, I did put in here that there is not a special opportunity for housing authorities. I know that that doesn't apply, so I'm gonna, I'm just, I'll just skip past this. And just a note of the benefits of, of community solar, certainly the savings. And then in this instance, each separate legal entity can sign up for their own share. And if they purchase a hundred thousand kilowatt hours, they can also save thirty-three hundred per year. And I understand that Millville is part of the regional school district of Blackstone. So I, I would, I would be interested in speaking with them about this opportunity if that, you know, if that opportunity arises.
I, I have a comment on that. We were able to incorporate Millville Elementary into our green community work.
Okay.
And, but to take that further, because we're a regional school system. We really, the only way this'll work effectively is if we look at it and get the Department of Energy Resources to recognize the entity of the, the school district. So that Blackstone get their full credit to apply to projects as well as we would get. If, say if we, see right now, Millville is only like twenty-six percent of the home thing. So we, we need to, I need to convince Department of Energy Resources. And I'm working with the Chair of Blackstone to get together and work with the school district. Because eighty percent of our energy usage in, in town, municipal and school, is all in the school.
And does the town pay the electric bill or the school district pay? So then it's, it's a separate thing, and so this is not contingent on you being a green community. Any community can take advantage of this. And so the school district, being a public entity, can take advantage of solar net metering separately from the town.
And also potentially have a thirty-three hundred dollar per year savings.
Yeah, we would need to do this, but I like to do this originally in the district because the district.
I'm sure they use a lot more power than your municipal buildings.
Yeah, a lot more.
Yeah. And, and we would be happy to take a look at their electric bills too, and say, this is what we think you're gonna need over time. And, you know, we would, we would analyze the amount of energy that's been used typically in one year, and then over time, maybe over the past two years, if we can get that historical data to understand the trend.
We actually have all that data.
Great. So some of, some additional benefits of community solar are local employment. It means that we are building energy power plants here in Massachusetts instead of importing, you know, fuels from elsewhere. And it's also really good for the environment, I think, you know, that's a natural. And, um, it's also really good for the environment, I think, you know, um, that's a, a natural, um, a natural benefit. Um, it's the equivalent of taking nearly two hundred cars off the road to build one megawatt of, of, um, solar energy. So, um, we anticipate that the projects we're building are going to be thirteen megawatts of, of, uh, solar power in the end.
What would be our upfront investment?
Nothing.
Nothing.
No, um, sorry, let me see if I can get this to advance. I'm worried because I just pushed it like three times. Ah, thank you. That did work.
You do know.
That did work. Um, um, so what we would, uh, the way we usually do this is we, um, we sign a contract. And there is language in the contract that states the anticipated start date. And when the credits start flowing, we double check your electric bill to make sure that you're getting the credits. And then we start billing you for the credits. And as an example, your electric bill will say, you know, you'll be charged, um, you know, one hundred fifty dollars for your electricity. And you'll see, um, it, it says transfer credit. And you'll say, see, minus one hundred dollars on your bill. And this is an example because it's, it'll be more than that.
Yeah.
But round numbers.
We wish our bills were a hundred fifty dollars.
Minus one hundred, and then you'll get a bill for, from us for, for eighty dollars. So you'll get a one hundred dollar discount and a, and an eighty dollar bill for us. So it's just a twenty percent discount.
Right.
I, I'm a little colorblind, but I'm curious about the shading.
Right.
I, I see that Bellingham and Uxbridge are dark blues.
Yes.
And then, uh.
They're housing authority customers with us.
Okay, and then the light blue is?
Is a, a town or city customer.
Menden and Blackstone. So Blackstone's already a customer.
Uh, Blackstone is, yes.
Menden and then Uxbridge.
The town of Blackstone.
Yeah.
Housing authority.
Was that?
Uxbridge Housing Authority.
Remember always. Uxbridge Housing Authority is, yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we, um, we're really proud of our roots in Massachusetts. And, um, I think that we, we talk with a lot of people who say that they've received offers from groups, you know, from North Carolina or California. And we want people to know that we're from the area and we are based here and our offices are, are in Boston. We're not, um, you know, we're not from out of state. And we, and we've worked with a lot of public entities. So we think that we're pretty good at understanding the issues that you guys are facing. And we hope, we hope that we're a good partner. Um, we do also have a list of, um, references. You can reach out to.
Okay.
Um, so that's the end of, of my presentation. But I do have some other pages of appendices with, um, references that you have. And I can offer more than this as well. This is just what fit neatly onto a slide. Um, and then a little bit about our proposed sites. We do have site control of the land. Um, the land is actually a large farm in Westport. And the owners wanted to keep it as farmland long term, but they didn't see a financially viable way to do that. And so they're going to lease, um, some fallow fields and some areas that are not agriculturally viable to us for the solar project. So, um, that's how they're able to, um, you know, maintain some longevity to their farm. So we, um, we have received our net metering allocation, which is important if you're talking with, um, you know, another developer and they say, we, well, we don't have it yet, that's, that's a problem. That, um, you know, I would, I would caution against. And then, um, we have our interconnection services agreement fully executed. So we've been working a lot with National Grid on some other projects. And then this one, we have our interconnection services agreement. Um, and the, the permitting is fully completed. So we are on the site now, um, doing some, uh, site work in preparation for construction to begin in a couple of months. And what we're planning to do is we're going to, um, build the projects to the size that, of the demand that we are seeing. And so, um, we are hoping to get commitments from everybody by, you know, hopefully by the end of July, but certainly by mid-August, so that we know exactly how much energy we should be building. Um, we're nearing the end of one incentive program that the state has sponsored for the past several years. And the new program is starting in two thousand eighteen. And, um, the new incentive program, the regulations, the draft regulations have just been released and they're accepting, um, comment now. But it doesn't look like it's gonna be as favorable to, for solar in the future. So we're hoping that if there are people who are interested, that they can take advantage of the, the discounts that are available this year. Um, and I have a few more. If you're interested in the, um, these are the site plans for, um, there's one, and then there's two and three there. And then I think I have some case studies here. Oh, this is your savings estimate. Um, it's on page thirteen. And, um, so we, we do an estimate based on a very low utility rate escal- escalator and a very high, um, or a high case, I, I think it both, I think that even the high case is quite conservative. So in the low scenario, it ranges from about thirty-three hundred dollars per year, you know, up to over four thousand per year in the future. Um, and, uh, and you can just see that, you know, it's a, it's a just a twenty percent discount with a metering credit. And these are just a couple of projects that we've already developed that are done. Um, here's one in Fairhaven. Mill Road. And then we have one in New Bedford as well. And I think that's.
You missed Dartmouth though.
Dartmouth.
Between New Bedford and Westport.
Actually, I can't remember if we have a project in Dartmouth. And I think that's the end, I think that's the last slide. But we, we have, we have, um, several projects across the state. So, um, you know, I just wanted to put a couple of, of the examples in here. Um, and so what, what we would, uh, what I, what I've talked with Jennifer Administrator Callahan about is, um, uh, that we would sign you guys up for, um, one-third from each project, as I mentioned. Um, I'd be happy to look at electric bills and if there's an opportunity for us to add something to that or to, or to take it away to, to just make it the right size for your loads, then we'd be happy to do that as well. But I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. And I apologize, I was not available for the last meeting. I, I was, I had taken two vacation days.
Jeez.
Kind of jungle.
Who would have heard of that?
All, all that.
Nice long weekend.
Usage of information is, uh, it's up on the website, on the MEI Mass Energy Insight.
Oh, right. And I'm not sure if we can access that, um, but we were going to look into that. And that's with green communities, right? That's your green communities portal.
Right. And for our town, it's all municipal buildings and schools, the elementary school.
Okay. Okay.
Now, what about, you indicated that residents could, at some point?
So, um, typically in community solar, residents can. In this particular project, because of the way the state's expiring program has worked, they have, um, net metering caps. So a maximum amount of net metering that they're allowing, both in the private sector and the public sector. And the private sector cap is fully met in National Grid territory. And these projects were permitted and, um, the interconnection services, uh, and net metered under the public cap. And so only public entities can buy the solar from these projects. So it would be your, you know, your municipal, um, uh, accounts. And then we could talk separately with the school about their, um, their accounts. Um, and then, you know, I understand in Millville, you don't have other districts. But I think some have like a water and sewer district, they could sign up as well, those kinds of entities. And certainly housing authorities.
So I have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
So you're making your money from the, the eighty, because you are a supply deliverer, you're everything.
Yeah, so we, what, what I typically equate this to is real estate development. Because it's basically finding the land and getting everything worked out to build the solar. And a lot of that includes some, um, we, we get funding from, so the state's program is called SREC. And it's the Solar Renewable Energy Credit Program. And when you build a megawatt of solar, you get a certain amount of SREC credits. And then you can sell those credits on the market. There's a market for S-Rex, there's a market for everything, right? So they are, the, if no one else buys them, the utilities will buy them. Some other entities will buy them because they want to show that they are supporting green energy production. Um, in some cases, that, um, some environmental groups might buy them and then retire them. But utilities will buy them to prove that they're supporting renewable energy because the state has certain requirements for renewable energy generation under, for each utility.
Okay.
So that's, that's sort of one source of the, of the funding that we use to build the projects. And then another is the federal tax credit for, there's an investment tax credit for, um, renewable power. And, um, uh, so that's, you, you get the tax credit on your tax return the year after you build it. And so then we have to get an investor to invest in the project upfront so that we can build the project and then give them the tax credits at the tail end. So it's, it's a little bit of, um, you know, just a complicated real estate, um, production, uh, and, and development. And, um, so that's how, that's how we.
Okay.
We put the project together and we essentially get a development fee. So also, I have worked in the past on multi-family buildings and that's, it's very similar. Someone would build a multi-family building and they would get a fee, you know, once it's all up and running and if it's on schedule and on budget and all of that things, then, then you get a fee for having built the project.
Okay. Um, so I noticed it's a twenty-year, well, uh, twen- not long, twenty-year, um.
Contract.
Contract.
Mm-hmm.
And there, um, because I always worry, because what if you have to leave? So one, um, early termination is clear. It says the first element is twelve fifty per generation unit. Could you tell me what a generation unit is?
Sure, so, um, a project, so you would have three.
So this would be times three.
Generation.
Okay.
And, 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 um, I had actually shared, um, three contracts, one for each generation unit. So it, it, well, I'm sorry that the language is.
No, that's okay. I know this is probably just a standard thing. And then it also says a second cost associated, um, net metering credits to your account after termination.
Um.
Are you familiar with?
So.
What that is.
In the state of Massachusetts. I know. The way that the net metering credits get transferred from our project to you is through a form called the Schedule Z.
Yep.
And this, yeah, the sched- yeah, it's our reference to the Schedule Z. The Schedule Z says, this is the project and here's the meter. And that, that's our information. And, and we're, we, we do that. We're not, you don't have to do anything with the Schedule Z. But, um, and then we say the accounts and the service addresses where all of the energy should go. And we can only change that twice a year.
Okay.
So if you tell us the day after, we could have changed it.
You're tied in until the next time.
We're tied in with you until the next six months. So I think that, I think that what that sentence is referencing is that you can tell us, but we need to, we need to stay in the, in together until we can get you off that Schedule Z.
Okay.
But if you tell us like the day before, that end of that six month period, then we can get you off it right away. But we never know whether it's gonna be like a week or six months because of this twice a year thing that Massachusetts has. In many other states, it's, it's once a month. It's not twice a year, so. Does that make sense in that context?
Yes, it does. Well, I just wanna, you know, I mean, you, you sign, you look at, signing something for twenty years, it's a long time. And if it's not working out, what is the cost to, to, to leave? So right now, it's three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars plus that other unknown factor.
Right. But you will still be getting the credits on your account at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I should, I also want to point out that, um, we get debt financing to build the, to build, for construction financing, to build the project.
Yeah.
And they require a twenty-year contract. They won't, they don't want to, um, they don't want to invest in a project that doesn't have longevity. And so that's where the twenty years come, comes from.
Okay.
And I've heard of other people saying, oh, I know someone who off, is offering ten-year contract. And I'm like, if you don't sign with us, that's fine, but don't sign that because they're not getting, they're not gonna build that project if they're offering ten years. Because they, they can't, there's no way they can get financing for that unless it's like, you know. It's like Warren Buffett and there, he's just, he's just gonna build it, whatever, you know. I, it's not, it's not a very solid investment from a lender's perspective.
Okay. And my last question is, how does this work in relation with colonial power? Because the town entered in, I mean, I know, I know that's our residence, that, that goes on to our residence. But was municipal part of that? In purchasing?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's our, it's our overall, well.
Is this a community, is that a community aggregation?
Yes.
So, and, and it also supplies your, your power supply for the town buildings? And it works together with it? So, um, so if you ask them, they'll probably say, yes, that's a nice, that's a nice thing. It's not, it's not in competition with their power supply. It works together. So on your bill, you would see your one hundred fifty dollars, like the magical bill that's only a hundred fifty dollars. And then, and part of that one hundred fifty dollars is your distribution charge, your transmission charge and the supply. And the supply will say, I don't know what it comes up, colonial power competitive supply, right? Or something on your bill. And that will have a, that rate will be discounted. So the all-in rate of one hundred fifty will already be discounted. Um, and then you'll see, still see our transfer credit minus one hundred as a separate line item below that. Our credit is off of the net metering value that the utility is offering. So it's still, uh, an opportunity for you to, to save money and it's not in competition with their, with their supply.
I can run a conjunction and, does the rates vary? I don't know what our rate is with colonial.
Well.
Well, actually, it just went.
Right, when we did actually stayed where we were at. But, um, the, the, the last, uh, presentation, when Mark Capadona came with Denise Allen, they went over, and we, because you weren't here, we did ask a little bit, a few questions about it. And they were actually supportive of, of the notion that if you can sign up still with, um, a company that is offering twenty years at a twenty percent discount. And we had spoken about this as well, that the regulation, state regulations, um, uh, in terms of the benefits of signing up for solar net metering are about to change and not necessarily be as, um, as giving, uh, in terms of the overall percentage. So they did say that it's, it's a good time to do it if you can do it. Uh, but then, and we did ask in point blank.
Okay.
Yep, and I do have it on the list of things to talk about a little bit later about what transpired with the final, um, price, aggregation pricing that took place.
All right, that was all the questions I had.
Are there any other, I, I'm happy to answer any other questions?
I have one right now.
Okay.
Elizabeth, can you just explain to the board the, um, the time schedule that you're on?
Sure.
Because I think that's important. One of the reasons I brought you back here is because I understand that there's some elements here that you either have to get on board or not get on board, and if you do, um, not, consequences.
Absolutely, and we're, we're hoping to start construction at the end of August. And, um, to start construction, we need to get our, our construction financing. And in order to do our construction financing, we need to get at least sixty percent of our off takers signed up. And so my goal is to have that figured out by, um, August eighteenth, which is essentially the, the middle Friday in August. Um, and so it would be really helpful to get you guys signed on, you know, it would be great to get you guys signed on by the end of July. I understand that you might wanna, you know, have another, another meeting, another, um, you know, if you have any more questions, I'm happy to answer them over phone or over email and I'm happy to come back out. Um, but, uh, it, it would be, um, basically, at the point where we are, um, we might decide to make the project slightly smaller. Depend, if there's, if there's not as much demand for the power. Um, because we are nearing the end of this program and we do wanna get the construction in the ground and we don't wanna wait for, you know, every last, um, you know, off taker to sign on. Um, so it would just be, it would be really helpful. I don't, I don't wanna say like there wouldn't be a space for you, but it would, it would be, I can guarantee that there will be energy that you guys can buy at this discount that you can get signed on, you know, by the, in, by the, between the end of July and, and the early part of August.
Our next board meeting is August, uh, seventh.
Okay.
So, I mean, one of the things, uh, that I haven't run by, um, town council yet is the, the actual agreement. And, and I know you, they're probably standardized and you've had other communities look at them, but we would have our town council take a look at it. And, and I know you, they're probably standardized and you've had other communities look at them, but we would have our town council take a look at it. And um, and you know, we could try to uh, see the feedback and I can share that with the board. Uh, but then it's up to them, I think, whether they would like to go forward with that.
And we would be um, interested in any feedback you have on the, on the um, on the contract. We actually, we tried to shorten it to make it easier for, for your town council to review. Hopefully less expensive for them to review. And um, you know, if there is anything in there that you think is. You know, doesn't apply or is um, superfluous or is just, you know, unreasonable, we'd be interested in hearing it. Um, just so that we know, you know, going forward too. And it may be something that we can get back to our, our lawyer and say, and, and you know, he might say. Oh yeah, that's, that's fine. You know, we don't need to have that in there or something. So if there is something.
Could you give us till the eleventh? August?
Yes. I thought you meant tomorrow.
Wow.
Yes, August eleventh.
And then, I mean, that's a month till our next selectman meeting. And I mean, we don't know if, whether we're gonna need to have another meeting or a workshop to deal with anything. So maybe if something falls between, cause we do have five Mondays in July. So maybe if something, if a meeting is scheduled, we could put this topic on, refer the discussion and possible vote.
I'd, I'd be looking to get a, a workshop going this month.
So.
So I, I think the answer is, we'll, we'll work on our end to get the documentation together.
Right.
Uh, have town council review it and then, you know, be able to make a decision. You know, I think the big thing was giving the board an opportunity to ask questions and.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I'm just sorry I missed the last one.
That's okay.
Um, any other questions before I?
I don't have any.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. This is, this has been um, really fantastic to come out and talk with you guys. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you.
Okay, that sounds good.
No, Chief hasn't showed yet.
Maybe we'll continue on to old business and.
Yeah.
Mass Works. At Central Street. And that's um, basically to review what went on at the special hearing.
Right. Not everybody was um, at the um, uh, public forum, but it was a great, I think a great public forum. We had a great attendance. Uh, we were able to, I think, generate an awful lot of um, interest and questions uh, for the first public forum. And uh, I know that the town, towns engineer uh, was very pleased with the number of people. And the commitment that um, came out of that was um, as they continued to work on the designs. That they actually will be uh, working with butters onto the ma- the central street. And work to explain exactly what will happen in front of their house. And uh, so they've made, the T E C engineers made that commitment. But um, in general, I think it was very positive. And um, I was happy to see the number of people turn out. And I think that overall, even the number of people that were speaking after uh, the session was over, were very positive. And I think looking forward to it. And just like anything, everybody looks for more information. So that's the key here is to keep people up to date and informed.
That, that's the sense I had. It was a positive meeting. And uh, it was based on fifty percent plan. T E C is now working on the finish off hundred percent plan.
Yeah, the one thing about Mass Works is, in the old days, it used to take a long time for them to get projects done. Uh, they actually look for projects to be moved along as quickly as possible. So their actual um, being, you know, shovel-ready. Is to actually start doing some of the preliminary work in the fall and actually be finished by next spring. So when we say that they're gonna work, you know, um, as quickly as possible to keep to that timetable. Well, we're hoping um, as well as if we can keep it um, to that time schedule and potentially even under budget. Then that might uh, open us to some other monies that could be available to help finish any aspect towards um, the Rhode Island Board. That just didn't quite get put in here. But um, it would help us um, offset the money that we're thinking of um, applying through our chapter ninety money. So, so I think it'll be good.
Special Town Meeting Strategic Financial Planning Summit. Is it scheduled?
Yeah, I, I think that uh, as a result, not everybody um, potentially uh, was able to attend our special town meeting. And we of course know that there was an increased uh, amount that uh, was approved um, at that town meeting for the school. I think one of the things that I wanna keep emphasizing to people is regardless of whether we could afford to do that. And was a vote of the people to do that this time around, we know that we are in a particular patent that cannot continue. Will not be sustainable. So regardless of what we're doing right um, at the moment, uh, after uh, the special town meeting. Uh, in terms of our own financial uh, planning. I've spoken with our town accountant and our finance committee and the next step is to continue actually working already. On coming to those numbers. Uh, you know, a lot of people think that there wasn't an awful lot of dialogue that takes place before our town meeting. And I can assure you that our finance committee met um, more than two dozen times, trying to work on that budget. Um, and to come to consensus on numbers. Uh, I think that we even met many times with the um, superintendent. And also the school committee. But one of the things I think that we're still, uh, it's like the elusive butterfly, getting together and agreeing on that number and sticking to it. Uh, a lot of people are critical of the state uh, not doing that for their revenues. And they come up with a revenue consensus figure. Uh, we know that we need to set our uh, tax rate to appropriately um, fund our municipal services. And we know that we have um, to right-size our budget. We're gonna keep that message and we're gonna start with that financial strategic summit. Uh, in August. And I'd like you to think about trying to do it um, before, I think, or around the second uh, week of August. If we can do that. And that would be, you know, including everybody from our finance board, our capital planning boards. And uh, you know, we're basically also gonna uh, outreach to the school and say that hopefully, you know, we come around um, Thanksgiving. That we'll have our numbers together. I'm hoping that they'll have their numbers together. And uh, you know, we'll be able to see, you know, what we can do and sustain and what we can't. We just know that um, we've had it all along in our planning that even if we got through this year, that the next phase is gonna be really looking at. How do we, how do we support all the things that the town needs? Because right now, on the pathway that we're at, uh, you know, you already know. You know, where our stabilization is at, you know, and where we're gonna continue to be at. It's just gonna continue to draw down and then it's gonna be completely unsustainable. So, you know, the financial summit is the first step um, again, in this process. And um, you know, I'm looking forward to it and starting it off um, earlier without, you know, having the caveat of a, a building that, you know, you get kicked out of. So I think, you know, we're moving into a new building. So hopefully, I'm all new on the inside. So hopefully, we'll have more time to devote. Uh, even though I think two dozen plus meetings was a lot of time to devote to uh, you know, working alongside with the people involved. And making sure our financial um, house is in order.
Would we wanna set a target for the summit for the fourteenth of August?
That sounds good to me. What date is that?
It's a Monday.
Monday?
In between our selectman meetings.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And I can check, I'll double check with uh, or let the finance committee know. Okay?
So. I um, brought up at special town meeting that we've been waiting for a plan. We are expecting it of our, our departments. We're asking them to look forward. We're asking them to plan forward. To have a five-year plan, to use our capital money and our capital um, budget appropriately and pacing out what we need. And I think our financial team this year um, you know, set down some great foundation and I think it's going to continue. So with that being said, I'm gonna um, make a motion. And I will make it at the first meeting of every month. But I would like to send a letter to the school committee, asking them for their five-year plan. And I will do so at every beginning of the month, first meeting of every month until we have that. So I make a motion to send a letter to the B M R School District, asking them for their five-year financial plan.
Second that. Aye.
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 Okay.
That, that's key. We start early in the season.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, we were told we were to have something and we don't. So.
I'll be more than happy to draft it. And actually, because it's your motion, I'll, I'll circulate it with you and then, you know, send it, okay?
Save it in case you have to change the date on the top next month. Second request, third request.
Well, you're a great group of constables. We could always hand-deliver it by a constable to make sure they get it. I, well, no.
Frustrated.
I think, uh, well, that speaks to why, you know, we'll need to, to.
It's the one entity that we, we don't have.
Yeah, from understanding where it's going. I agree.
Yeah.
We know that. And that's gonna be part of it.
Regional department, yep.
With regard to uh, the enforcement task force. Um, and we're all coming together on that. We, I think, I, we, we need a, a date to meet. I don't know if we wanna do this on the seventh.
Uh, I think it could wait until the seventh. I mean, you know, that way, I mean, there's an awful lot of things that are ongoing. But uh, I think between moving and getting the department heads all situated, I think August seventh would be a good time to, to have that. And that'll also give me time if um, if I need to call in uh, any of our uh, legal counsel relative to certain cases. That we could have that as part of uh, the executive session that you'd like to have. So if that's okay with you, I'd, I'd slate it for the se- August seventh.
Anything else? Anyone have anything?
No.
Um, as for selectmen's firm, I just wanna say that um, I was, I was at the community garden this weekend. Um, they needed some help weeding, so I dragged my children there and taught them a good lesson on doing a little community service. Um, and I know we've talked about it and I've seen pictures on Facebook, but to go in to see, I know Mark Robinson has spent a, a great amount of time. And he has a, a few people helping him. But I think um, you know, the intent of sharing and also giving to the food pantry is a wonderful idea. There's some, um, lots of plants and lots of things going there. And I would just say, you know, stop by or, um, you know, pull some weeds or talk to Mark. And or, you know, with through the Pox and Rex, it's being done. But um, I think it's a great endeavor and I think it's a valuable lesson. And hopefully it, it gains um, momentum over the years and, and goes. But it was, I was really impressed. I was, I'm not a, a farmer. I don't grow anything. I grow children. Um, but other than that, I was, I was. That's, that's, that's my superpower.
That needs notoriety.
It does. It was.
Because it surprised me to see your, your post, that, that garden was so well-developed in terms of cucumbers and cherry tomatoes.
Like it was, it is. It's, and he's, I know it's a labor of love for him. So um, I think everyone should, you know, if they can, if they can help out. It'd be a great thing. Or just to stop by and see or offer help or whatever. So, that's it.
There's another piece to that. Um, as we're starting our, the, the, the beginning phases of our open space recreation planning, that C M R P C. Um, we've agreed as part of that grant uh, to actually file a plan that will help us gain access to additional money. But you know, open space and recreation, gardening is one of those things. And uh, there are some other communities in the area that have designated um, you know, plots. That the town has owned. Uh, and you know, created an actual garden, not just behind, you know, the police station, which is very admirable. And, and I'm really pleased that it's, it is taking off the way it is. But there are other opportunities to put that as part of our planning. And maybe look at other parcels in town to create that incentive, like you said, to get even more people involved. Uh, so it's some.
Yeah, we could ten acres back there.
Yeah.
I don't know what that soil is.
I think we just make sure the soil is really good, no matter where we put it, you know. So, but that's, that's really good uh, thing to think about.
It was nice.
You can go hydroponic, hydroponic. Just take the water from the river.
There you go. Pump it up. So.
Okay.
Okay, so uh, the chief isn't here yet. Uh, town, uh, town minister before.
I'll start with that. Um, town hall update, there's an awful lot of uh, finish work that's being done at this moment. Uh, to make sure that everything that we have to get done is done. I'll be doing a final walkthrough with our uh, building commissioner. There may be a few little things that we still have to do, but um, I have to again say that it's so exciting. It's so exciting. And uh, this week, there will be some movies that'll be moving heavier uh, things, fire cabinets, uh, some furnishings. And then uh, of course, uh, the town hall employees will be moving hopefully as little as possible. Because I feel that it's good to have somebody else be helpful to do that. But organizing things and reorganizing once we're there. So um, so that part of it is really good. I really would like to have uh, this soft move occur and then have an open house. Uh, in the beginning of August on hopefully a night that the, the employees are working on a Wednesday night. And maybe do it from four to eight o'clock. So uh, I was hoping that maybe we might be able to do it the first week of um, first Wednesday in August. I think that gives us enough time to try to do things. And there's a lot of people who may be on vacation and, and it gives us some time to broadcast it. And um, you know, obviously, I'd like to do something similar that I did with um, the Central Street uh, project. To generate interest and enthusiasm to come um, and be part of that. I know, I know the police department is eager to be part of that. Um, I think the chief's offered to uh, cook hot hamburgers and hot dogs for us. Uh, but no, all in good, good uh, chest. Uh, it's a, it's a good thing. So I don't know if um, anybody's planning to be away, but I would certainly want the full complement of the board to be there. Uh, because it is pretty momentous of uh, an occasion. So that would be like August second. And if that didn't work, then we could try um, the following Wednesday. But I'd like to try to, to keep it as close to when we move.
Second works for me.
Okay. All right. So if that works, um, I'll make sure that we um, kinda move towards that target and I'll let you know if anything uh, comes up. Uh, there are obviously some special guests that I'd like to be part of that process as well. And knowing that the Blackstone Valley Tech um, students are away, there's an awful lot of um, sophomores and juniors that are returning. And uh, you know, I feel badly that it's just the way that the construction season took place and the obligations of the school um, coming to an end. You know, superseded our ability to sort of do something for them. So I'd like to make a recommendation to the board that in the fall, when those students do come back. That we do a really wonderful um, you know, special event for them. And that would be separate than the, you know, having some of the residents actually, you know, see. And know that we're up there. But uh, I think we could, you know, make that a very special event for them. And I know a lot of them would like to see it. You know, they heard about these.
I think that's important.
These employees working out of the jail and working out of the booking room. And so I think they'd like to see some of these people. Um, other than just me going back and forth. So I think we'll do that in the fall. And uh, I have some ideas I think we can share later on that I think would make it special for them. So then uh, colonial power, you asked about that. I'm just, we did have the final um, aggregation uh, pricing. If you look in your packets. Um, one of the things, the first and foremost thing I will tell you is that, well, we remained with um, national grid. Uh, even though the pricing, if you see what comes in, uh, the pricing originally came in with national grid being at about nine point four cents. Uh, for residential, uh, eight point seven cents for commercial and street light. In industry, we really don't have, but seven point seven percent, uh, seven point seven cents. Uh, that was the uh, part that national grid was uh, putting out there. If you look at some of the aggregation, the diff- the thing about aggregation is when they go to market for pricing, they can do it individually for the town. And then they price it uh, for the collective. The collective in our case uh, for aggregation involves um, other communities. Such as Halifax, Pembroke, Mendon, Upton, Franklin and Millville. And um, one of the things that uh, we discovered in our conversations, because we all go on, on a conference call with it. That um, even though the national grid was pricing it out for just six months. Some of these other uh, companies such as Constellation, Jexa, Public Power, Verde, Hampshire Power. Uh, those um, and Constellation, uh, no, I already said Constellation. So those uh, particular entities can do. And oftentimes do more than just a six-month term. So they put out some figures uh, at the pricing of the market. And initially, uh, So they put out some figures at the pricing of the market. And initially, the company in particular, Jexa, had given for a thirty-six month rate of, they had actually lowered it. It came out first at eleven point four. And they said that if the group of towns, the ones I just mentioned, had stuck together, they were willing to lower that rate for thirty-six months to ten point six.
A good deal.
But all towns in that collective had to agree. And right off the bat, we had somebody who, who didn't wanna be part of that. So that meant that we couldn't access that. So I asked, even though some people had, Mendon was ready to go on for that. Because if you remember Mark's conversation with us is that we expect, especially next spring, that because capacity is gonna change to the, the electric market for our area, that the, the pricing is considered to be very volatile, it's gonna go up. So he said to us that, you know, that pricing to come down almost a full cent because they were originally at eleven point four. And they were willing to come down a full cent for those towns, our towns together, to try to get us to do thirty-six months, which would have been stabilizing potentially the volatility of the market, which everybody is saying is gonna exist next spring. So we lost out on that, but before everybody had jumped off the line, actually, I tried to say, what if a smaller number of us, could they go back to that company while they were still pricing on the market? And so they did go back and they came back with not exactly the same pricing, but not horrible, it was close. And we then still had somebody who didn't wanna do it. So, you know, instead of ten point six percent, a ten point six cents, it was like ten point seven. So, almost ten point eight. So it was just a little bit, two tenths of a cent. So what does that mean? It means that we still have pricing with National Grid. So people, even though for the next six months, they will have a, a lower rate, about like nine point four cents. If they had done this for the thirty-six months, you know, our initial couple of months before it actually takes effect would have been like nine point two cents and then would have gone to ten point eight cents for thirty, for the other thirty-four months. So I'm hoping, and this is what I asked, and since we didn't get on to that, that Mark did say we can go back out probably September with this collective and see what the rates are doing then and see if we can get consensus to lock into a longer-term rate. I would have liked to lock into that rate if we were at ten point six cents for the long term. I think it offered stability to, to the community. And again, it's an option that the residents would have to opt in or to opt out. And however, we can still do this. We can do it again in September. But I think now, like I said before, it's like playing the stock market. I mean, it really is. You have to, you know, bite at the apple when it, when it comes back. And if you don't, you can go back out and see what happens. So that part of it is there, but we'll see. You know, we might get another six months and, but in September, if we come back and go out and we see a favorable rate, then we might be able to get these same companies to offer what they had. So there we are again. So nothing's changed for the moment. And hopefully someday we'll be able to, to change that a little bit. The next thing on your town administrator update, I put this in, I, I'm not looking for any answers for this right at the moment, but there's an awful lot of talk about the town cemeteries. And I know it's been on Facebook. I know our Veterans Agent, you know, had, you know, talked about it along with some other people. People in town, I think, think that the town owns the cemeteries. And we don't own any of the cemeteries. And I know that there have been issues related to the appearances of some of these cemeteries, including the ones on Central Street, which I know they recently hired a company to come in and, you know, remove tree branches and all kinds of stuff because the cemetery has, you know, a group of volunteers that, or trustees that oversee it. And the Main Street Cemetery has also garnered an awful lot of comments. So I put in your packet, we're not alone as a small town with this issue. And bigger towns actually contend with that because they recognize that there's an expertise, not only with maintaining cemeteries, but operating them. And so at one of the recent MMA kinds of workshops, there was for the managers and administrators, there was this discussion. And I know like the town of Princeton was dealing with this very issue because they have these independent cemeteries as well. So there was questions about how do people go out and think about dealing with cemeteries even from a bidding perspective as opposed to town service actually doing it. And so I put that in there. I don't know what your feelings are to talk about it, but I think something might need to be considered in the future. And if it's getting these groups of people, I think someone said the Chestnut Hill Meeting House is responsible for the Main Street one. So I, I'm putting it out there because I don't know what's happened in the past. I don't quite remember seeing them not really maintained. I, I know that the, some people have talked about the Central Street trustees have in the past used the money they've gained on interest to really keep the upkeep of the cemetery going. But that, of course, has been kinda flat in the, in, in, in terms of interest market terms. So they have less and less money and they're, they don't really have volunteers to be able to do that. So I don't know what the answer is right now. But I mean, I, even just looking at the wall on Central Street has been an eyesore. And, you know, as we get closer to our project, I have some ideas about trying to look at it in terms of maybe historic preservation grants and the like. But that has nothing, that has only one, that's the appearance on the outside. It's what's happening on the inside that's also important. So I don't know if you guys have any thoughts about it.
Annex to, to the Central Street. Which street is that on? Not Quaker.
Providence?
Providence. Is that?
Yeah.
That one's, yeah, there. Um, I don't know who mows it or takes care of it, but I walk by there quite often and it's always trimmed back. I don't know if a neighbor has taken it on, upon themselves to do that, the one on, the, the small one on Providence Street. I know, you know, the one on Central Street, they have a trustee and a committee. And I know the one on Main Street would get done by the, the workers on the highway during the past summers. But I think, you know, that changes based upon the workforce and how they employ and, and things of that. And, and money being short and having to focus. So I, I'm hesitant. Not that I don't, I, I want the cemeteries to look nice. I don't know what the answer is. But I don't know if we want to take over maintenance of these. Cause I think we opened that door to how far does that maintenance go?
Mm-hmm. Well, I think that's one of the things, I mean, we could do it as a workshop and, and actually discuss it. I don't think we're the, the only community that has this issue. And I think part of it is trying to figure out how maybe we can help leverage resources to get certain things to be done in a certain way. There might be some, you know, thoughts behind that. And what does that, what does that entail? But I think anybody, most people associate, you know, cemeteries somehow with communities because of the fact that people have to go someplace after they're no longer part of this world. And I think, you know, it's, in some communities have cemetery commissions and they do that. But you're right, there is a cost to that and it's involved. And we don't know what kind of resources some of these other places have. And if they're really next to nothing, then that's a, that's a different story. But we don't know. I don't know what their, their, their accounts are. I mean, then nobody knows how much money they have. So, but, you know, obviously, certain things haven't been getting done. So, you know, I think it, 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 it does, it's painful for some people to drive by and see that. They feel it's not respectful of the people who are there. But again, we're not in charge of them. So I think, you know, if we could do a workshop at some point, maybe invite every single, you know, people who are obliged to take those responsibilities of caretaking for those cemeteries at the moment and get a feel for why something this year isn't being done. I don't know. I just have not seen them not done in the past sort of the way that they are today. I mean, has the Main Street Cemetery looked overgrown like it is now?
Oh, there's been.
Years?
There's been years that it's, cause it's sometimes the last thing done on the list. Do you know what I mean? The roadways are done. And I can only attest to the former highway surveyor and the work schedule, but I can remember it being like in August, only because I know he, he would go on vacation for two weeks in August. And it would keep the kids off the street without like, you know, your regular adults there. So they would have off-street projects to do during that. And that was always in August. So I, I don't, I don't know. I have a, a bit of a problem calling in people saying, why aren't you, why aren't you mowing there, it's this, or why aren't you doing that?
Well, no, some of them have approached that.
And I will agree. The, the Central Street, I've talked to a couple of the trustees from there, cause there's three from one family. And I spoke to them at length. And I said, you know, maybe there's something out there through historical or through this and maybe reach out to find out from the town. If an email comes through, that would be relevant to fixing the wall or maintaining. Maybe they could, you know, get that information from the town. I don't know. I think it's a, it's sticky because it, they're, they're not ours. They're under associations. They're under trustees. And I don't care. I, I'll mow a lawn, but what happens when the wall breaks or there's damage to the, the cemetery or there, you know?
Well, and that could be the other.
That concerns me. It's not the mowing of, that, that's, that's small in comparison to, once you tie in, what kind of maintenance are we kinda getting ourselves into? So I, I'm hesitant. Not, not that I don't wanna be informed or have someone change my mind, but right now, I'm, I, I, I'm, it makes me nervous.
Well, I think one of the things I can potentially do is continue to gather some information. This was just a preliminary to let you know. But it, it isn't even just the complaints that I hear. I, you know, there are members from certain associations that are, they, they don't know what to do now because the, the number of people to help do certain things are not there and neither is their budget. So, so it's just something to, to consider. I know, I know. I understand that.
What happens? You start mowing.
Right, one.
Entities that don't belong to us, they're cemeteries.
Right.
Then a VFW is gonna say, hey, how about us? And then a, a community associat, association is gonna say, hey, how about our grass? We don't have, it's gonna mushroom.
Right.
And I.
Yeah, no, the only thing about cemeteries is that there's a lot of communities that own sem, you know, that, not own, excuse me, that, there's a, right, we don't. But there are a lot of communities that have cemetery commissions and they, because of the same issue, they might have seven, eight, you know, cemeteries. And then it was just a matter of, you know, time that they no longer could sustain it. So it's just, you know, something to talk about at some point.
But those are communities with different tax bases.
Yes, I understand. But it may be something that we have to talk about going forward. As far as walls and things and that kind of thing, I mean, things that fall within the right of way, no matter what's happening, they may, we might be able to address that issue. And that, that's one of the things I would like to do as we go up further on Central Street. But this was more about maintenance and things like that. So I, I will do a little bit more homework. And if it, you know, if it proves to be of interest to the board to, to think about going forward, we can do that. I have a, a workshop or something. But I'll, I'll also talk with town council about how they handle little communities like ours, you know, have they handled, you know, some kind of conveyance of just the, you know, lawn maintenance or something like that? You know, it could be something that gets drafted up very, if, if we were interested in that. So obviously, it was being done in the past to a certain degree. Okay?
Yes. There's probably a lot of things the former highway surveyor did out of the, you know, goodness of his heart to help the people around town. But, you know, unfortunately, we can't always sustain or maintain that.
Sure, sure. I gotcha. All right. So moving on, we'll just, I just put in the demolition grant proposal, just so that you could see what was submitted. But more importantly, also to, to see that one of the things that I put in was a draft of a potential RFP. If we're so, you know, of good fortune to receive this grant, it's one of the things that I think would have made the grant more likely for funding. And that was if we are able to receive the funding to take down the Mug Pub property, then, you know, one of the things I was proposing is to actually put out requests for proposals to find out what this board would like to see as potential development. We could declare the property in the future as a surplus. And then you would, just by putting out an RFP, entertain any and every proposal or not. And it would give you some ideas about what you might wanna see going forward. So I put that in since we had not had any real discussion about what we definitively would want there. One of the things that I thought is that we might be able to get some ideas going forward if we do it that way. And, and I'm trying to time all this because Central Street, you know, is also on a pretty rapid time schedule. And so that even if we do, you know, are able to move forward on that property and eventually, you know, call for its demolition, then the next phase would also, you know, I think go pretty quickly in trying to decide what to do with that, especially since the Central Street project would more than likely be underway at that time.
I think we need to understand the limitations of what you can do with that property.
And I think a, a good developer of some sort would do that research as well and, and find out and come up with ideas. Some people would come up with different ideas about what you could do based on, you know, having a sewer system or having a water system. And, you know, there, there are different configurations that people can look at as opposed to us having to figure that all out on our own. You, you impart the developer with a proposal to figure that out. But that's, just so that you know, that, that would be something that if, if we get approved, that, you know, I, I've actually looked, did some nationwide research to look at, you know, an RFP proposal that was kinda cogent. And I kinda reflected it to be more like ours and what I thought our town could, could use in terms of what they'd expect from a developer. So there's that. And out of state, out of state, out of district student transportation.
Just a question on that. What's the, I know it's been submitted, but what's their timeline?
I expect to hear from them shortly because they, they wanted to do, they, they asked for all of it to be done within the previous fiscal year. So I think that their next round, I expect it, you know, I'm hoping to hear by August. But I am gonna give a call to see how they're progressing with it. And, you know, I'll keep my fingers crossed one way or the other. So if that's the case, then we'd move to the next steps for that. And then out of, of district student transportation, we already addressed this earlier. But one of the things that I wanted to say is that I will be consulting with our town accountant to look at where we would actually come up with this. Because the Keefe Tech student was not expected. And now, just having recently got that information from Bill Legere, it's, it's, you know, I will be rapidly working to try to find out what other towns, like Jen suggested, are also potentially having some of these students since we won't be able to combine the transportation. Okay. And that ends my, includes my administrative update and.
So we'll move back. Chief Heinrich.
Yes.
Heinrich's here. We, as to your information, we approved the resignation of Jeffrey Beckworth.
Okay.
I'd like to hear a little bit about the, the fire suppression tank at the elementary school.
Okay. It appears that we have a leak at the elementary school for the fire suppression. We're not sure if it's the actual tank or the pipe that goes from the tank to the building. It's losing about two hundred gallons a week. So we're going to, rather than haphazardly start, you know, considering digging, because we have no idea where it is. There's no valves midway where we can try to identify where it is. So our plan is to turn off the valve under the water tank and see if it leaks at the, at the tank. And if it does, we know it's the tank and we'll see the water level going down. If the water level stays at the right height of eighteen feet, then we turn the valve in the open position and we have a leak. Obviously, there's a leak in the pipe. That's about two hundred feet of pipe. We have no idea where it's leaking from. It's not coming to the surface. There's no sinkholes. There's no evidence at all. So rather than simply jump the gun and start digging, we're gonna try the tank first. And then once the tank is eliminated, we'll figure out what to do with the pipe. I'm gonna be in touch with some companies to see if we can put pressure in that pipe and see if we can get it to leak more than what it's leaking.
Where does it come across? It comes across the play?
Yeah, it goes, it comes up the driveway a little bit where the tank is. And then it cuts across where the oil tank is. So I can fire hydrant. That's where it comes out.
Okay.
So it's two hundred feet of, of a pipe and there's no shut-off midway. So we're kinda in a little bit of a jam here because where do we start to dig if it's, if it's the pipe? So that's gonna be an interesting proposition we're gonna look at. The good thing is, there's no danger to the school. There's still head pressure in the water tank. The, the fire suppression system will work if it needs to work. But we're gonna turn it off for a couple of days this week. And I'm gonna have a fire watch inside the, the school, just in case something happens. So then we'll take. So um then we'll take our measurement two or three days later to see where we are. So that's where we stand.
It looks like there's there's a variation in the daily.
There is.
Is that true?
Sometimes I think it's it's not so much a leak, sometimes it's a malfunction of the equipment. Because the measurements go up and down, we've measured it ourselves, going to the top of the tank and sending down the rope and taking the measurement, and we've seen water loss of maybe two or three inches, which equates to hundreds of gallons of water. So that's why we haven't jumped to the gun on this particular issue yet. We want to make sure we do have a leak. Um it's not the equipment. So we're gonna eliminate, like I said, the tank, then we'll eliminate the line, and then we'll look at the the equipment that's used to measure the water in the tank. But if it's a leak, unfortunately, it's gonna be a rather costly repair, unless we get lucky and we find it.
What kind of costly repair?
You know, I have no idea because.
Only because if it falls under a certain level.
Right.
The district is responsible for repairs.
Let me, let me say this.
Versus over a certain number, then the town's responsible. So I think we want to have a firm grasp of that.
See, it's in the pipe.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have no idea of no, the town's gonna be responsible because the cost is gonna be expensive, because you have to pick a spot, we're gonna have to start to dig. And you may be digging the wrong way. So that's gonna be expensive. If it's the tank, we had that tank refurbished, um how many years ago?
About three.
Oh, longer than that, maybe five, six years ago, we had it refurbished. So it may need to be upgraded again. But if the tank is getting older, it's towards its end if it's a life cycle, so we may have to think about replacing the tank. And that's a lot of money. That's not something the school department's gonna pay.
Back in the start of uh fiscal sixteen, uh Rickman, they looked at the tank and they made a recommendation on monitoring equipment. And the board didn't support the uh the expenditures.
Right. Right now it's digital and we don't know if that reading is very accurate. So we've been doing it by hand with a rope and actually trying to get a precise measurement of how much we're losing. And we're gonna do that all week, especially with the tank being shut.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll try to eliminate everything we can until we identify where the leak is. And if it's not a leak, then the equipment's gonna have to be replaced.
Yeah.
Either way.
That in itself is why the board, the board now is the expense.
Either way, it's gonna be expensive.
In the life expectancy of the tank.
Exactly right. And um so I think that tank is at its usefulness.
When it was rebuilt, it was estimated at a ten-year, that was a ten-year.
Exactly. And so I I think uh we may have to look into the tank, if it is the tank of replacing the tank, rather than fixing the tank.
The only other thing I said to the uh chief, and we both agreed, is that we might um, we're gonna try to take a look, uh depending on what his findings uh continue to show, if it looks more like the pipe versus the tank, uh that maybe we can, uh there might be certain technologies or resources that, you know, we're not thinking of because we're so small of a community that the State Fire Marshal's Office may have, um that could point us in the right direction. And maybe um there's something that we're just um not used to that can detect leaks, you know, to a certain degree of a different, you know, um paces uh from from a source. So I don't know, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna reach out to Whitensville Water.
Mm-hmm.
They seem to be the expert in the area for that. So once I have a definitive answer on the tank.
Yeah, well, no.
And we think it's the line, then I'll call them to make arrangements to have that pressure tested if we can. But the bottom, the bottom line is, I don't know where it's leaking and I can't find it. So it's it's a slow leak, I mean, it's a couple hundred gallons a week.
Well, you had a two-inch increase.
I know that.
What was that? 'Cause everything's pretty steady. It's like every two days, you're losing a tenth of a point. And then all of a sudden, you were up two inches.
That's the reading that's been provided to us by the staff at the elementary school. Uh, we go there daily, it's it's digital. It reads what's in that tank. We should maintain eighteen feet of water. And a couple of weeks ago, we were we were lower, we were seventeen and change. So I made them top it off back to eighteen feet.
Oh, is that that day?
Yep.
Okay.
So we filled it up back to eighteen.
Okay.
And we're going down again. So it's obvious we have a leak.
Yeah.
Um, but where, you know, where it is, I don't know. So not to repeat myself, we'll find out uh within the week what it was like.
Okay.
Um, we needed your presence here. We were gonna vote on the uh the AED, the forty-eight hundred dollar.
Yeah, that's a great, uh you credit to Trish for that. Uh, this wasn't even a grant, this was the foundation she uh learned about that was giving away AEDs or or funding the purchase of AEDs, and AEDs are very expensive.
Mm-hmm.
So my intention is to give one of them to the new town hall. And the other two will go back into the fire service and or police. They're roughly eighteen hundred dollars apiece. Um, and we generally have three, six or seven on staff at any time. The one that, I don't know if you mentioned it, the one that was in town hall is now at the Senior Citizen Center. So we're not gonna take that one back, we'll just give you a new one. And um so thank thank you, Trish, for that.
Good.
And we did receive a live check. I don't know if that's what you're voting on.
Yeah, the vote to accept.
Yeah, and they sent us a live check and uh so we're good.
All righty, so I'll understand your motion and accept. And thank the Firefighter Support Foundation.
Great organization.
So we're.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
All right.
That's it? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry it took so long, I was at the planning board for their meeting.
That was an interesting.
It was very interesting.
All right. Okay, so other than that, Mr. Chairman, your uh next meeting will be August seventh. That was only to show you that.
Okay.
Mr. Beckwith, Patrolman Beckwith was appointed.
That's fine.
Thank you for asking.
And uh pursuant to Mass. Journal Act, Chapter thirty-three, Sections twenty-one, Paragraph three, um we're gonna go into executive session to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Local one-seventy regarding contract negotiation with the chair. Uh, the claims that open meeting may have a dental detrimental effect on the bargaining position at the town.
Only to exit?
Only to exit.
To adjourn.
To adjourn regular session.
I'll um move in the words of your motion.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Aye.